Everybody ready? Welcome, everyone, to the October 20th City Council Work Session. First of all, I just want to say before we get about our business, I want to thank Chris for running the meeting last week. Thank you very much. And I will send you all information about the Makers Conference that I went to. It was really very interesting and fits in with many things we're going to be talking about, so, very good. So, the topic today is Eugene Water and Electric Board Riverfront Development. You the manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn it over to Denny and his team in just a moment, but this particular project has been ongoing for numbers of years, and there's been an enormous amount of public input throughout this process, really, starting several years ago and actually developing the master plan itself. And, of course, the council, a couple of years ago, took action on form-based code as part of this particular master plan, and we're getting to the point of actually having a developer entering into negotiations through that. But there's also been a lot of other ancillary or supporting elements to this particular project that have been going on for a long time, too. And so, this is really probably the first of a continuing conversation on any number of elements over the next many weeks and months and years with this particular project. So, Denny?
Thank you, and it's really exciting to be here tonight to give an update on the riverfront redevelopment project. For those of us who've been around a long time, including Nan and I, we spent many years planning for this opportunity, and we've talked a lot about the importance of this site as it relates to many other communities, plans, goals, and objectives. We've recognized that the E-Web property, again, is the only property in the downtown plan area that actually touches the river. So, that really creates a tremendous redevelopment opportunity that's in front of us. We've also recognized that the property has primarily been in industrial use for over 100 years, and that presents really some significant challenges, and I think those are challenges that we're prepared to meet, basically because we've spent a lot of time to date working on this project, preparing for this project, leading up to this opportunity. As the city manager indicated, with the recent selection of a master developer for the site, we're clearly entering a new phase of this project where these opportunities and challenges no longer are really on the far horizon, they're actually now right in front of us. And that really represents kind of an exciting moment for all of us, and it should really be an exciting moment for the community. Today, what we really want to do is provide kind of a highlight of what we've accomplished to date in preparation for this opportunity. We also kind of want to look at the current status, where are we today, including some of the opportunities and some of the challenges that might lie ahead for this project. And we also want to talk about some of the initial next steps that are anticipated for this project, now that we've kind of turned the corner and entered into a new phase for this redevelopment project. So, I'll start by handing it off to Nan and talk a little bit about kind of where we've been.
Great. So, starting with the downtown vision in 2000, the Courthouse District Concept Plan in 2002, and the downtown plan in 2004, and Council Polling and Council Taylor, you were on the council at the time that the downtown plan was adopted. We've been moving steadily forward to rebuild our downtown and to build toward a downtown riverfront. The downtown plan from 2004 laid out the process for the redevelopment of the E-Web property, and it encouraged development between the core of downtown and the riverfront. In 2006, we completed the courthouse area transportation improvements, which allowed us to have a walkable crossing at Eighth and Mill, and I don't know if you remember what it was like before, but you literally took your life in your hands to just cross the street. So, we fixed that, all with the goal of making the connection between downtown and the riverfront. In 2008, council and E-Web appointed community members to the community advisory team to guide the master planning process, and in 2012, envision Eugene set the larger context for the importance of our focus work on downtown. The master plan was approved by E-Web, and in 2013, the master plan and all the related code and plan amendments were approved by council. So, the downtown plan is now 10 years old, and we have accomplished an enormous amount in that time, bringing people, companies, opportunities, and attractions back to downtown. We've stayed true to the plan. So, the goal is to draw people, for a variety of purposes, to downtown on a regular basis. All of these developments support what we're trying to do at the river. We've also worked to transform the area around the federal courthouse from a vacant industrial brownfield site with less than inviting pedestrian environment and low-value uses to a street that has the potential to draw pedestrians from downtown to the river. We've been systematically working on improving this connection, starting with the federal courthouse and the transportation infrastructure. When I say "we," it's really council giving direction, the city manager and your staff, and the community, because the community has been engaged throughout all of this planning work. With every opportunity, we're trying to strengthen downtown and building the connection to the river. So, beginning with the federal courthouse, and in fact, one of the few things we were allowed to ask the federal courthouse to do was to face Eighth, which they did. Now, the opportunity of a new city hall, and the possibility of an enhanced place for the farmer's market, Whole Foods, all of these developments on Eighth, the Northwest Community Credit Union, Sam Bonds Brewing, which is now open on Eighth, a different kind of a pedestrian draw, all of those developments are helping to create this connection. They've supported the connection between downtown and the river. So, the community invested time and energy into the plans and the visions, and the result of that engagement is momentum towards the riverfront. So, in 2013, council, as you know, adopted the master plan and the related code amendments. That was a big step. That means that we now have the regulations in place to allow the appropriate amount of development and the desired mix of utility. So, creating a new place on the river, an active people place, that's the goal. Here are the key elements of that plan. I know that you know this, but I'm setting the context, and I'm reminding all of us of how far we've come. So, key elements of the plan: a pedestrian-oriented, accessible and welcoming place, a diverse mix of public and private uses, habitat enhancement, riverfront open space, we'll talk about that in a sec, integrated stormwater and green streets, a flexible design framework that still maintains consistency with the overall concept and vision, and redevelopment that contributes to the economic vitality of Eugene. The master plan indicated where open space would go. Open space was a key element, highly desired by the community, so it has a prominent place in the master plan. In February, the city and E-Web outlined an agreement for the public park on the riverfront. The agreement provides certainty that the parkland will remain in public ownership. And here are some of the details. E-Web will transfer approximately three acres per dollar, and the city will identify and appropriate not less than $3 million for the development of the park, consistent with the master plan. E-Web, in turn, will provide not less than $500,000, which is really the maintenance funds for a period of 10 years. And the agreement anticipates that the park will be developed concurrent with the private development, or within five years, whichever comes sooner, so that the park dovetails with the larger development, but we make sure that we do get a park. Now, the outline of terms for the public park really was a milestone in realizing the vision for an accessible public waterfront. Downtown currently doesn't have an accessible open space on the river where you can easily experience the river. What we have is anything but green. We have a chain leak fence on one side, a falling apart rail on the other. It's not the green open space that we experienced north or south of the E-Web property. So, the goal is that there's a riverfront park and a riverfront development, so that when you're downtown, you know that you're on the edge of a great river, and when you're at the riverfront, you know that you're next to a great downtown. We've now completed the planning work on this property, and now we're entering the new phase, which is that implementing the plan and realizing the vision. So, in March, E-Web released an RFQ for a master developer for the site, and Denny and I participated in reviewing those RFQ responses. The city manager was an advisor to that process as well. Three highly qualified firms, development teams, became finalists, all with the capacity and the experience to redevelop the site. And ultimately, the E-Web board selected the U of O Foundation as lead developer. So, here's how that team looks. U of O, Spectrum Development as the fee developer, DeChase Mixes as project management, Hugh Pritchard and Harris Hoffman as project advisors, Ralph Brokaw Architects, and PWL Partnership Landscape Architects. This team has strong ties to the local community, significant expertise, and a commitment to seeing the site develop consistent with the community's vision. And because it's the U of O, the commitment and the level of engagement with this community runs deep. We believe that this team has the ability and the commitment to create something of lasting community value. They understand, we've heard, they understand the importance of the riverfront to the long-term prosperity, livability, and economic identity of the community. So, this is, the way I'm talking about it, it's an amazing opportunity that we're at this moment, because all of our planning work, all of our community meetings, the council direction brings us to this moment where we get to build the riverfront and create what the community has visioned. We're closer than we ever have been before to that goal. There will be challenges, you're about to hear about them, but this is our opportunity to create a riverfront that's true to Eugene and something the entire community is proud of.
Thank you. Our goal today was to get you all excited and then have reality step up. So, I want to talk about some of the challenges with the development site. I think, first of all, it's no surprise, given the 100 years of industrial uses on the river, that this is a brownfield. We're currently working with E-Web to do an environmental assessment of the property, working with them, partnering with them through our Brownfield Coalition EPA grant. We'll know more about those challenges when the assessment work is complete, but as far as we know, this is a brownfield site. The Eighth Avenue Crossing, currently you can't access the property from downtown. As Nan mentioned, we've planned for the crossing when we did the courthouse area transportation improvements, and this is really the final piece of our Eighth Avenue to the river plan, is crossing the railroad tracks. There are two historic structures on the site, the steam plant, of course, it's been targeted for preservation and adaptive reuse, but that's likely to be very challenging. It's an old building, it could be expensive undertaking to redevelop this building, but it's highly desirable, and we feel that it's been strongly supported by the community that this building get redeveloped. There's also the historic Botress Building, it's also targeted for preservation and adaptive reuse, probably a little less challenging maybe than the steam plant, but still challenging, but also highly desirable and supported by the community for adaptive reuse. There's the Viaduct. The Viaduct currently bisects the property to the north and south. This really poses some challenges regarding connectivity to Fifth Street, and also just some challenges on how the north and south sides of the property connect for redevelopment. The railroad, you know, there's a lot of talk about the railroad. Of course, it creates an access barrier to the site, but it also is a tremendous noise maker, as we know, and we reopened some conversations with council about the quiet zone, and we anticipate that we'll continue those discussions, of course. But making that a reality has some major technical and financial challenges, as we've heard recently, but it also creates an opportunity for more housing and more density in the core, so we feel like it's very important. Enhancements, the riparian edge on the riverbank will be critical component of the redevelopment. Again, transformation of the existing kind of hardscape, industrial hardscape along the river into an attractive inviting park and green space will be a major financial undertaking. And finally, the site basically lacks basic infrastructure needed to support the future development. It's consistent with the master plan. The master plan really envisions new streets and plazas and sidewalks and utilities and water features and stormwater features, bike and walking paths. None of those things currently exist on the site, it's basically a blank slate. In a lot of urban environments, you have conditions where a lot of those things already exist. In this case, this really, a lot of that infrastructure doesn't exist. Ultimately, we'll need to work with E-Web and the development team to look at tools and strategies for addressing some of these challenges. It's really too early in the project to identify exactly what those tools and strategies might be. In fact, we really haven't even sat down with the U of O Foundation development team yet to really get a better understanding of what their vision is for the site. However, our experience in implementing the downtown plan suggests that there will definitely be a need for some robust set of tools in order to see the master plan vision carried out. Tools such as MPT, urban renewal, financing, parking, affordable incentives, federal resources, many other of those tools have been used downtown very successfully and effectively, and we expect to be considering many of those tools as we move forward with the riverfront project. So, quickly, just regarding next steps, with all of that in mind, we've identified some initial next steps. The project will basically require a minimum of kind of a three-way partnership. Some of those next steps might involve only E-Web, some might involve only the city, some will need to be taken in partnership with the development team and E-Web and so forth. We need to spend, again, more time with the partners to decide how we move forward in partnership. But ultimately, E-Web will lead off with negotiations with the U of O Foundation team, specifically related to the purchase of the property. E-Web has given the board, their board has given direction for that to be a six-month negotiation period with a three-month check-in, just to make sure they're making progress. A project team will need to be developed, we're not quite sure if that is, you know, one project team working all together, or whether it's our team working with the development team and E-Web's team working with the development team. Again, we'll have to figure that out forward. E-Web's completing environmental assessment, we've talked about that, they're also removing the hazardous materials from the steam plant, that's work that's currently going on that E-Web is doing. We'll need to finalize the park agreement. That basically means spend more time with the development team to better understand what their development vision is for the site as it relates to the park and the timing of the park. We also need to identify public-private partnership opportunities, and we've highlighted some of the challenges. Again, we'll need to develop some strategies on how we move forward with tools to see redevelopment of the site occur. And, you know, some examples, again, are the park, the quiet zone, the railroad crossing, just to name a few. We're also working on a triple line analysis tool that we want to use, we'd like to use for, to kind of assess our investments moving forward, and we'll be reporting back to council as we move forward with that tool and some of the investment decisions that we'll make. But ultimately, our primary role is to see and establish really the framework that will ensure consistency, development consistency with the master plan. Ultimately, again, our key role, however, is really kind of twofold. First, staying true to the community's vision that an active inviting people place occur. And second, to strategically and thoughtfully evaluate the partnership opportunities and their use of various tools to ensure that the riverfront is built consistent with the community's vision for the property. So, with that...
Thank you.
Comments, questions?
So, my only, thank you very much for that presentation, keeping us up to speed here. My only comment is, you know, we're doing the livability of...
Lane livability.
Lane livability and showing the outcome of that, and we're referring to this area as the River District, I think, and I really like that. I hope we start calling it that on a regular basis. I think it gives it a sense of a place and makes it interesting, so just comment on that. I'm looking around for comments, anybody? Do you want to go around and ask? Betty?
Is there any consideration of daylighting the mill race?
The master plan does not call for the actual daylighting, although it does not preclude the mill race to be daylit, just the costs and the environmental impact were considered too significant to go forward with that, specifically to implement that. But the master plan allows for that possibility and actually has sort of green fingers areas of enhanced stormwater to recall the mill race, or if there were ever money, to actually daylight the mill race.
Thank you. I'm always confused when people say it's hard to get to the river, because all you have to do is walk up High Street and you're there, and it's easier than walking over the other way. As for the park, you said, excuse me, you said the city is, or someone, the city has to contribute how much money for the park?
The current agreement has, and this is kind of an outline of terms that we have with E-Web to move forward with the park, it's not a final agreement, but the agreement basically provides that we would spend at least $3 million, and that means we'd have to find those funds and allocate those funds for the park project, but we've given that commitment, at least to E-Web, and some assurances if they grant us the park, so to speak, for a dollar, that we have the funds necessarily to actually move forward with the park.
Where does that money come from?
That's undecided at this point, and that's part of the process, as we look at what's the park design and what the funding sources are. We're just not there yet.
And who pays for the infrastructure?
Well, you know, as we pointed out, there's many challenges, infrastructure being one of them. We really need to sit down with the development team to kind of understand what their vision is for moving forward. We don't know necessarily even what their needs are. I think it's way premature at this point to be able to say who pays for what. This is going to be kind of a very interactive process with the development team, with E-Web. That's some of the things that we need to figure out as we kind of build the team and move forward.
Thank you.
George Polling?
Thank you. And I don't know if I missed it or my memory's slipping, but who's going to actually own that property? And at what point does ownership transfer from E-Web to whoever?
Are you speaking specifically of the park or all of the development area?
The entire area.
Right now, E-Web owns all of it, and I would anticipate that the ownership of everything but the park property becomes something that E-Web negotiates with the development team and sells to the development team. I'm not anticipating that E-Web will end up owning the redeveloped area, but E-Web will maintain ownership of several parcels along that stretch that they need to maintain.
What I would add is, as E-Web goes through their negotiations with the foundation, part of it would be the timing of when any ownership transfers, but they also have other opportunities. They could enter into long-term leases, they could enter into lease-purchase agreements. There's probably a variety of actual legal mechanisms for allowing the property to be used, and as far as I know, they haven't settled on the best combination of that yet.
So, is the foundation, or the development team, or whoever is it, will it be subjected to property taxes?
Our understanding is if that property transaction occurs and the U of O Foundation owns the property, it would be subject to taxation.
So, basically, then, once the signatures are on the dotted line, it becomes subject to property tax, which goes to the county, goes to the city, and et cetera. Okay. I think this is a great plan. It's, as pointed out, it's been a long time in the making, and we still have a long way to go on it, and I think we have a lot of valuable tools that are available to help build this out and keep it in the perspective that the citizens have, you know, the way that we've kind of envisioned this to come about. I'm glad that we are moving forward, "we" meaning the entire community with this, so I just hope we can kind of smooth out all the bumps in the road ahead of us. Thank you.
George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, throughout this whole process, we keep hearing about connections to the river, you know, great streets and all that, and so, once all this happens, I haven't seen any much mention of actually developing the river as usable, as allowing people to go to the river beyond what we have now, which is a bike path and a hiking path and everything. And I don't see, you know, like Corbalis has done with their riverfront downtown, where there's actually paths down through the river, so you can actually get to the river, you know? And I'm wondering if that's, if there's been any more thinking about that.
This is the high bank, so access to the river is difficult, although there are several places where you get very close. One is the E-Web Plaza right now, you can get very close to the river. And I appreciate that question, because getting to the river really means that you get close to the river and you can appreciate it and take it, you know, take in the environment and see whatever habitats there. So, the master plan does envision that there are bank enhancements that do a couple of things, make it a little bit less steep and make it a little bit better for the habitat restoration, and to create that park along the river, so there's actually a place where you could get closer to the river environment.
Well, that'd be good, because, you know, I'm like a lot of people, I like to take my dog down to the river, I like to go to the river, I like to go swimming in our rivers. There's very few places to do that, and as it flows through town, and you have to go to the outskirts to do that, and Springfield's got that great Day Island Park, and very well-used, and it's right there, right central in town, and I realize, just because of the physical characteristics of the river as it flows past this site, you know, there's challenges there just physically and hydrologically, because of the angle of the flow and everything, and I get all that, but I'm, you know, if it could be developed somehow, then that would really just polish the whole thing off, I think, because there are almost no places in the central part of town to actually go to and get into the river that's easy, you know, and safe. There's plenty of places, but a lot of them are unsafe, so we have, you know, drownings every year. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to follow up on Council Brown's comment before I get to mine, I believe it was several months ago that we had a report on the riparian zone development around this area and the riprap plan for development along this, along the line down here. Am I correct in that, in terms of, just kind of going back through my memory on that? There is a developed plan for the natural area here.
I know our Parks and Open Space Division has a variety of different plans and concepts envisioned for the river to include this particular area, and I know Craig Carnegie has been meeting with council members and just sort of on the whole park system to include this particular spot here.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought I recalled. And so, going back to the preservation of the steam plant, what kind of flashed in my mind was Jackson Square in New Orleans. And taking a building of that stature and then redeveloping it for commercial uses is something that I think is really exciting, and I think that what we, that just gives us a platform for public-private partnership that I think, you know, can be realized maybe sooner than later. Has anyone expressed any interest? I know that we've just got the U of O Foundation as the primary developer, but has there any been, been any talk about, you know, developing that, you know, building or redevelopment of that building for commercial usage in that, in a similar fashion to what Jackson Square is in New Orleans? I kind of like going to the top of that thing and getting into all of the spices and other stuff that they have available.
One of my favorite places.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the, there's been experience, or interest expressed in the Botress Building. As part of the U of O Foundation's presentation, they unveiled some interest by King Estates to maybe possibly redevelop the Botress Building. The steam plant, it's really, I think, going to take the development team sitting down and figuring out what's the, you know, economically viable use for that and how it contributes to the rest of their development plan for the site. So, I would say they're not quite there yet to even solicit interest, because they kind of have to figure out, you know, what's the vision for that building and how it fits into the site and the development. into the site and the development.
Alan?
Kind of on that theme, the Willamette Greenway runs through this part, and that dictates a lot what can happen. Can you run through some, some of those details and what the requirements are of the Willamette Greenway and how that limits what can happen there?
The need to accommodate the requirements in the Willamette Greenway was actually factored into the whole series of code and plan amendments. I can't give you too much detail. I just was looking it over this afternoon. So, essentially, the application that was approved here for the code and plan amendments includes a Willamette Greenway permit if you develop in accordance with the plan, which of course, that's what you need to do.
What about the setbacks and things like that, and how much riparian needs to be there, and how much, and these would be natural versus lawn or other hardscape surfaces?
I don't have that detail on the tip of my tongue, but I know that, two things. One, there's a lot more detail in the code, but the general idea is that where the environment was more sensitive, the buildings had to set back. Where, where there's already existing development, the buildings weren't required as, to set back as, as much, but I'd be happy to give you more detail, come back with that info.
I know this is 100 years it's been an industrial zone. How much more environmental remediation is required, and have we uncovered it all?
As I've indicated, E-Web is currently going through that assessment process. Again, through our brownfield program, through our EPA grant, we've assisted them with that work. They've done Phase 1, they're now doing Phase 2 work, and I can't remember how many borings they've done on the site or in the process of doing, but it's pretty significant. So, we don't really know the extent yet. We know that on the, the, the south side or closest to the university, there's the old coal gasification property, which is not part of this surplus property, because it had some major issues of contamination issues, and so that's kind of being dealt with separately. But I think we'll wait and see what comes up, and, you know, the environmental issues are more between the E-Web and the purchaser and how they resolve those at this point.
Do we know when that timeline for that?
When would we know? I would say that that work is kind of on its later stages, so I would say within the next 30, 60 days, maybe, E-Web, that information will go to E-Web as the property owner.
Back to the infrastructure costs, the roads, utility, this is all going to be owned private property, and usually when a developer does that, they pay for all the infrastructure, meaning the roads, the sidewalks, the utilities that go in. Is that kind of the understanding or the plan?
Well, we, we don't really have an understanding yet, because we haven't really sat down with them yet to start talking about those kinds of things. So, those things will evolve over time. I don't really have an answer to who pays for what, because we just don't know yet.
But the typical plan is that they build the infrastructure and turn it over to the city, in a, like a residential development or a commercial development, right? That doesn't, that's brownfield or greenfield?
Yeah, and that might, that's maybe a classic greenfield development kind of concept. You know, if you look around Portland's waterfront and so forth, there's a strong public-private partnerships that occurred as they've redeveloped their waterfront, and some of that infrastructure was actually paid either through the city or their urban renewal agency, so it varies. I think we know that there's going to be some, some challenges, and we'll need to partner to try to solve some of those. I don't really know what those solutions are today, but we're probably going to have to have, again, a robust toolbox to kind of address some of those things, because I think they'll be, they'll be significant.
Yeah, I love the idea of the park and, and that zone, and I, and I really applaud E-Web for turning that over to the city for a dollar. That was very laudable, public purpose, and they should commend it for that. Speaking of tools, the TBL tool, can you explain that a little bit more and what it's going to be used for? Is it just for the city investments, or, and how is it going to play out?
What we're trying to do and what we would like to come back with is a full TBL analysis of, of both halves, what the public benefits would be by various components of the project, and also what the costs will be, both financial costs, but also costs in terms of impacts. So, we recognize that TBL does not say do this versus this, it does not give you the decision, but it lays out, as you know, a framework for giving you insight into making that decision, and we intend to bring that back to you with a full list of components, impacts, and costs.
Good. Final question, E-Web headquarters building, refresh my memory, is their intent to sell that along with the rest of this and move, or is it to stay? Or are they still working on that?
You know, when they put out their RFQ, they kind of left that open as an option to either sell or maintain their presence there. The cost of them moving is pretty significant, because they have a lot of infrastructure there, so I think it's probably their desire to stay there, just because I don't know that they could get enough revenue off the sale to replicate what it would take to establish that somewhere else. But I think they're still open to negotiations, and they'll, don't be having those discussions with the U of O Foundation team at this point.
Especially the fourth floor with all that command and control center.
Right, exactly.
Very hard and difficult to move, and extremely expensive. What's the ballpark range that the sale's going to be in, in terms of dollars?
I don't think anyone knows at that point. You know, the, I think one of the first things that they'll probably have to do when they sit down and negotiate with E-Web is how to determine the value, because that's very complicated, so I don't think that's actually been done yet.
Okay, thanks.
So, a couple of things that I've been thinking about, I've said this in the past, but I still think it's true. I think as people think about that site and how that district will be different from any other district in the community, thinking about how it can be very river-oriented just makes a lot of sense to me, and there's no other place that's really like that. So, it has lots of possibilities for thinking about recreation use, it's river-related, commercial use, it's river-related, things that make it special, a special place to go, that is unduplicated anywhere else, so just wanted to put that out there. And the other thing your conversation made me think about, the conversation made me think about, we shouldn't forget that the other side of the river is Alton Baker Park, which has a lot of access points and, and a lot of valuable property that we can care deeply about, so. And then the other thing is, it seems like a really opportune time for the city and a county and others to think about, are there things that are out there that we would like to have, that we don't have in our community, that this, we should be putting in the mix of, of thinking about? I mean, we've heard people talk about museum usage, we've heard about even the history of the river and the, and the utilities and all of that kind of, of history of our community, and is there something that we have interest in as a city, or the city and the county have interest in together that we ought to be trying to figure out how to make that part of this mix? Because you don't get this chance again. So, really trying to think from our perspective, what is it that we would like that to have that we don't have, that this would make some sense, and that could alter what we bring to people and have them think about it, too. But I think we don't want to get very, get very far down the road without us having that kind of thinking from, from our perspective as leaders of the community.
The master plan calls for what's termed a cultural landscape, so that the landscape itself starts to tell the story, the history of the area, and also brings in a cultural aspect. So, we haven't gotten very far in what you've just described, but I anticipate that we will.
A lot of, it seems like we could really push the envelope in some very interesting ways if we really let our, you know, push the edges of that here in our thinking. Anything, do you have anything? You have anything? Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, done for the work session? Be back at 7:30 for a couple of hearings.